Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order with a reminder that the actions taken this evening were focused on our students and their achievement. With that, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The consent agenda has been approved. Do we have public comment?
We do, and just as a reminder, some individuals may be new to viewing the Cedar Falls School Board meetings, and I wanted to provide some information regarding our public comment section. Our school board meetings are, by Iowa code, considered open meetings. An open meeting means the meeting is open to the public to observe and listen to the proceedings of the meeting. At the public comment section of the agenda, citizens have the opportunity to make brief statements to the board. To make a public comment, a citizen must simply notify the district office or board president by 4:00 PM the day of the board meeting, make sure the comments will be less than three minutes in length, and keep the comments germane to school district business. At this time, we do have an individual signed up for public comment, and that is Mr. Whiteoff. Welcome.
Good evening, Larry Whiteoff, 4241 East Park Road. My main topic of discussion tonight is, our number one cheering person for Cedar Falls, Tony Kramer, was 50 years old today, and I had the honor and with a friend to help put this in celebrations, and he's a great kid, and he comes over to my son's house, we do basketball, football, stuff things together, and he is a proud, proud Cedar Falls citizen. So with that, would just like to transition a little bit. The 6th of December, there's going to be a PEPL referendum for the one cent option tax, and as we saw with the city of Cedar Falls that meets here also, their tiger fund for $12.5 million didn't get accepted. The documents that are coming at us are indicating that we're going to have an increase in water sewer rates. They still haven't paid for University Avenue, it keeps running over in costs, and I'm just afraid that the one cent option tax might not make it on the 6th of December, and therefore there's going to be problems in paying for the refinancing of this bond issue. I know you're probably going to do it anyway, but I just want to be, want everybody to be aware that there is the possibility that the fund, the one cent option tax, might not pass on the 6th of December. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Will you, would you just clarify that it's the physical plant and equipment levy and not the one cent local option tax, so at least the community is aware of that clarification?
Exactly, and we have some talking points that I know we will pass out to people in our community and our board as well, and we put out information as much as we can with this, and know we will over the next several weeks. This is the referendum to continue the physical plant and equipment levy. This is a community-approved levy that's been in place for 66 years in our community. It does not raise taxes, will not increase the tax levy rate, and it's a levy that's focused on continuation of our technology planning to make sure that we have the right bus fleets and maintenance fleet across our district, as well as to have those preventative maintenance plans that we know need to be in place to make sure that all of our buildings, all, actually 12 of our facilities that we own as a district are kept up to date and certainly have the maintenance that they need to have in order to have long-lasting life. So this is a levy that's a continuation of that physical plant and equipment that Mr. Whiteoff referenced, that we are looking at having that vote, and we'll have that vote December 6th, and certainly is not tied into the one cent penny tax.
Thank you, Dr. Patty.
Thank you, Mr. Whiteoff.
And just to clarify too, Joyce, I mean that, the PEPL levy, we are restricted as to what we can spend those funds on.
It's a categorical fund, so we can only spend those specifically on what is authorized by Iowa code, and it's very clearly identified as your transportation technology pieces that are $500 or above, as well as maintenance and ongoing upkeep of buildings.
All right, thank you. Moving on then to the secretary's financial report. Doug has kind of a raspy voice this evening, so he's just going to hit the highlights for us.
Thank you, and hopefully you'll be able to understand me. If you want to throw the information up on the screen, please. There we go. First, we'll do the general fund for the month of September. You'll see that our fund balance is $4,337,392, and that compares slightly ahead of where we were at this time a year ago. In the management fund, our fund balance is $462,825, and you can see that that's really, really close to where we were one year ago. Statewide one cent sales tax, our fund balance is $9,582,137. That's approximately $1.5 million more than where we were a year ago, and just as a reminder, out of those total dollars, 2.829 million of that is restricted because of the holdings that we have to have for reserves for our two outstanding revenue bonds, and then the 6.75 million is available for use. Physical plant and equipment levy, fund balance of $2,397,780. That's approximately $1 million above the more we were one year ago. Primary purpose for that is we did throttle back on the number of projects that the district undertook this summer and compared to previous summers. Debt service levy, fund balance of $759,825, and you can see that's extremely close to where we were one year ago. Those funds, as a reminder, are transferred from Fund 33, the one cent statewide sales tax fund, as we build up dollars to make our debt service payments, the first one due December 1st and the second one on June 1st. Student activity fund, $587,642, just slightly below where we were one year ago. Food service, we're at $538,448, and you can see that that's up from $458,600 a year ago. You'll note the expenditures in food service this month, that is unusual, we had a timing situation where we basically were paying two months' worth of supplies in one month, so it was a timing issue. Normally, we do not have close to $380,000 in expenses in food service on any given month. High school coffee shop, they're starting to get going again, not much change, you can see just a little bit of activity for the first month of the school year. Our agency trust funds, there you can see our balance of $257,441. And the River Hills Consortium, there was no activity this month, you'll start seeing some activity, probably not till December, as we're required now that we can only invoice twice a school year, so that, you won't see much until a little later on. And with that, I would entertain any questions that the board might have.
Any questions for Doug? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the secretary's financial report?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Secretary's financial report will be placed on file for audit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to communication, item E, we have Ms. Julie with us today, Jorgensen.
All right, hello, it's good to be back. So right now, at Cedar Falls High School, we are currently in the middle of our six-week food drive. Our goal this year, in case people do not know, we are to, we are wanting to collect 20,000 pounds of food, which is actually a very doable goal, surprisingly, but we're in the middle of that, and that's good. We've been introducing a lot of new ways to raise money and like awareness and like collect cans for the food drive. As of right now, actually, the Powderpuff volleyball game is going on up at the high school. That's a fun way to like bring everyone together for the food drive. This Thursday, Student Senate is actually trying something new, we are doing our first ever karaoke night, so that's going to be a lot of fun. It's $2 to get in and/or two cans, and it's just going to be a great way to sing and bring people together for the food drive. Trunk or Treat is our annual trick-or-treating for kids, kind of, it is this Sunday from 1:00 to 3:00, so in case anyone is interested there. And also towards the end of the food drive, we have our Pizza Ranch Dinner, we do that once every year, and it will be November, Monday, November 7th, and 20% of all proceeds will go to the food drive. For extracurricular activities, all-state music competition happened this weekend, and many talented students tried out, and 39 made it, so it is a great day to be representing Cedar Falls, and men's and women's cross-country compete at state this weekend, so that'll be very exciting, and I will be ready and watching, so that is all, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Julie. Okay, moving on then to item F.
Okay, I guess that would be me, I'd like to introduce Larry Berger from Spear Financial, and I see Maggie also just walked into the room, and Mr. Berger will review the bids and our recommendation for refinancing our 2011 series revenue bonds.
Thank you, Doug, Larry Berger from Spear Financial, and my associate, I think, just walked behind me, Maggie Berger, my daughter, and as you can see, we did hand out a letter recommending a refunding, that we will be recommending to Key Governmental Finance Incorporated at a net present value of $1,455,088. What, if you'll recall, when I came to you, what we wanted to do is hire a placement agent, which we did, we took bids on that, we got the best placement agent at the time that we could, and then we sent this out to various banks and financial institutions in order to refund these bonds. Now, because we wanted to do that is because there is an advantage to that, Doug talked about his reserve fund, we actually get to put part of that reserve fund towards the bond issue and buy it down, which is an advantage to the district, so we wanted to go on. If you turn back past the front page of the letter, we just highlighted the four areas, and I, then I want to show you just one comparison of what we're looking at, but Key Governmental came in, if you'll notice, the new interest rate will be 2.10. The new optional redemption is actually five years out, which is a fairly short redemption. Now, you do have the sales tax guaranteed until 2029, and so that's a key point. So what we're doing is, the old bonds were out to 2029, and we're recommending that you keep them to that level. You actually can't go past that level because the legislation doesn't exceed 2029. There is other costs, there's a cost for counsel for the bank, and then there's a 120 coverage, which is pretty standard in a sales tax revenue bond. Just some other things that are pretty minor in this, continuing disclosure, you already do that, so nothing more than what you're already doing. Regions Bank came in with the same interest rate, but Regions Bank actually wanted you to fund a reserve fund in the last three years, so their net present value, actually savings, was not at the same level as 1.4 million, 1,455,000 that we're seeing. BB&amp;T came in, again, they had a net present value of about $1.3 million, less than that. But Wells Fargo came in, and they actually came in at a lower interest rate, but they wanted to shorten the retirement schedule by two years to 2027, and in the discussion with Doug, we chose not to recommend that. Actually, the net present value, as you will see, savings to the district is about $96,000 more with Wells Fargo. But I included just their packet behind this, the paperclip packet, and I gave the other packets to Doug for your review, because this was the one that came in, at least. If you just turn the next page, these are just a summary, and then let me just run through the one from Key Governmental Finance. And so I'm on the third page, it looks like this, it's called "The Sources and Uses of the Refunding." And so what we see here is you have planned equity that you're putting into it. We're closing this very near to December 1st, so we're actually taking your December 1st payment, and we're buying down the refunding with the $401,000. Also, the other contributions is your reserve fund that we were talking about. So as far as the sources, we're just buying down the whole bond issue with 2.1 million. You do have under the cost, you have the other cost, we do have a cost of issuance, that is the placement agent, that's our fee, that's bonding attorney's fee, and so on. You turn the page, I gave you the old debt service schedule that you're looking at, and as you can see, it runs anywhere from a 4.5% to a 5.4%. So that is your old debt service schedule. One more page, now this would be your new debt service schedule at 2.1% for Key Financial. And then if you turn the next page, this is your savings sheet, and the savings sheet shows that you save somewhere around $350,000 to $355,000 per year. The right-hand column, I've highlighted the savings sheet, this is the gross savings. Now, the net present value savings is actually the aging of money, so by the time you get this paid off in 2029, we have to report to you that the dollar is not going to be worth as much as it is today. And so if you turn one more sheet, we show you that the, actually, the gross savings is $4 million, the net present value gross savings is $4 million, but we can't say that's all our money, because you're putting in $2 million, you're putting in $401,000. So the net present value savings on this run is $1,455,000. That is net to the district, that includes all of the costs that we just talked about in the sources and uses, and so that is net afterwards. And then it's an annual $350,000 per year. So keep that in mind, under this proposal, we're saving $350,000. Now, if you take the paperclip off, I gave you one more handout, and again, Doug has the other two, Regions Bank and BB&amp;T Bank, if you want to review those. But I gave you Wells Fargo, because the net present value is actually $96,000 more. I gave you the sources and uses on the front sheet to show you that we're putting in the same equity from the district, but if you turn to the savings sheet, this is the all-telling sheet, that actually you're only saving anywhere from $42,000 to $70,000 a year instead of $350,000. Your big savings are in the last two years, because they want to shorten the deal, and that's when you save your full payment. And so basically, we don't recommend this one, because we feel that you can take the $350,000 a year, do other things with it if you have needs, or if you go with the 2029 schedule, and you don't have any other needs for the $350,000 a year, save it and pay it off in 2027. Remember, your call provision, your new call provision is only five years out, and so by 2027, if you don't have any other needs for the $350,000 a year, you can actually pay it off. Thus, it would have reduced the net, the net present value savings, and if you pay it off early, it's just like financing your house, if you finance it for 20 years, you're going to pay a higher interest rate than 15, but if you can pay it off in 17 years, you're going to save those last three years. And so that's why we are recommending this, because we don't feel that the, it's in the best interest of the district to wait until the last two years to get your major savings on the refinancing. So with that, I would answer any questions that you have.
Questions for Larry?
Just to review, Larry, what you are saying is, with the recommendation, we are looking at an annual savings of about $350,000 per year, or a total net savings of about $1.45 million by refinancing these bonds.
Yes, and that's net savings to the district, and if you'll notice on the front cover letter, if we turn back to it, I would make that recommendation, but that is also a 9.04% on the refunded principal. In an advanced refunding, our target is 2%, so you can see you have exceeded that 2% by at least four, four times and five times. And so this, we think, is a beneficial time, you get to release some of your reserve fund and take advantage, and then you have the annual savings on your sales tax, so.
So I'll jump in with my questions. Thank you very much, Larry, for the presentation, and first of all, I think Doug and the administration should be very much applauded, and the community of Cedar Falls should be very, very appreciative for the assertiveness of taking advantage of these low rates, because this means that this saves $1.5 million of school funds, that instead of going to Wall Street or a bank, we can invest in our community. So I, I think that's fantastic, so thank you for doing that. Clarifying questions, so the coverage ratio on the Wells Fargo is 1.1, does that mean we have to have less reserve than if our coverage ratio was 1.2?
No, what you have to do is additional bonds test, so if you issue additional bonds after this, then your 1.1 coverage means that the revenue at the time we issue any additional bonds against the sales tax, the revenue that you're bringing in has to equal 1.1 times the payment principal and interest on the new bonds and any outstanding bonds that you have. You far exceed the 1.2 that you're at right now.
Right.
So that wasn't a factor in our consideration, because I think by the time you pay these off, that you'll probably, you'll far exceed that amount of money coming in, plus the sales tax does keep going, it's up to $900 and some dollars a student. Right now, it started out, when I started doing these bonds, about $600 a student, so you can see the increase is probably 50% more than it used to be.
You mentioned that the benefit of the, I guess of not doing the Wells Fargo proposal is that we could achieve the same result with your recommendation if in 2027 we decided to pay off the bonds. Can you envision as a financial advisor a situation where it would be favorable to pay off bonds that have a 2.09% interest rate?
Probably not by 2029, but that's a decision you make annually, after the five years. That's the decision that the board will...
But can you envision a situation as a financial advisor where you would recommend paying off bonds that are, only cost us 2.09%?
Could you ask me that in 2027?
I'm asking, I'm asking you today, what would be your recommendation today? Should I pay off a bond that only cost me 2.09%?
Probably not, because the, the market, the reinvestment market on your money to pay those bonds off will probably be up a 4%, and so you probably will be making 2% on the money, or 3% if it's up to 5%. We have seen the bond market up at 7% and 8%, well, when you sold these bonds, it was at 5%. And so you have to look at the reinvestment market to make sure that it's beneficial to the district.
Okay. The other advantages that you recommend of Key Government is that it results in, what, about $275,000 of extra cash per year, so we gain some liquidity. Do you think that, now, if I thought that we were under financial stress, and we had to preserve liquidity, I would understand that as a recommendation, but I believe that we are on very strong financial footing, so I guess I don't necessarily appreciate that advantage maybe as much as, as others, and by retaining, no, by 2025, we have a set of bonds that will be rolling off, will, they will be terminated and finished, freeing up bonding capacity after 2026. This will, this would mean if we, for example, we accepted the Wells Fargo proposal, that we would have zero bonding, we'd have zero debt requirements for anything against 2028 and 2029, and knocking on wood, that the legislature will come to some kind of agreement whereby they will extend the pennies tax beyond 2029, which will enable us to have bonding capacity to, for example, fund the high school. It would seem in my mind that it's not such a bad thing to have full bonding capacity for funds that are out there in 2028 and 2029.
The, what you're looking at, though, is you could be looking at, if we were doing an underwriting on this, that the new bonds may require a 120 coverage, and so the 110 coverage would only go away after these bonds are paid for, and then future bonds could be at a 120. We've got to test that market to make sure that the underwriters on future bonds are comfortable with the 110. Secondly, what this doesn't take into account is the reinvestment of the $350,000 per year that you have the advantage of compared to the 40, or 70 to $40,000 per year that you're saving. So if you are taking the $350,000 and reinvesting it at a future interest rate, then that doesn't take into account the reinvestment of that.
But we're a school, we're not an investment fund.
But you will, I mean, you do invest your money.
Yeah, but what do we get for an interest rate on our money?
But that's not a future interest rate, you just asked me if...
No, but we're getting 0.5, we're getting 0.5%.
But you asked me if you would refund these out in 2027, I don't know that answer, but if you are getting $350,000 a year that accumulate, and accumulates, and suddenly you're getting off your reinvestments 2% and 3%, then this calculation's on the $96,000 goes away fairly fast.
Yeah, I, yeah, so here's what it comes down to me, so net present value, this is, this is money today, this is, these are dollars today. So by, if we choose the recommended Key Government Finance, we're spending roughly $100,000 more than if we choose the Wells Fargo proposal, and this is today's dollars, this is not future dollars, this is today's dollars. So this would be equivalent if somebody came to us and they had a bid for doing one of our facilities, and we had two different bids, and one of them was 1.45 million, the other one was 1.55 million, and both of them would achieve similar results, then we would obviously choose the one that is the cheaper.
Where are you, where are you getting the $100,000 figure?
It is, if you look to this recommended here, the NPV, on this sheet right here.
Okay.
So the recommended proposal is from Key Government Finance, it has a net present value savings of 1.455 million.
Okay, so you're subtracting 1.4 from 1.5?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
So, so the Wells Fargo proposal will save us, I mean, we're already saving a lot of money, don't get me wrong, this is, this is definitely the right thing to do, but we will save an additional $100,000 by opting for the Wells Fargo proposal, rather than choosing the Key Government Finance proposal. That's $100,000 in today, so we don't have to worry, but we don't have to think about what it's worth in 2028, what it's worth in 2029, what it's worth in any time in the future, that's $100,000 of our money today.
I think there's a point to be made about cash flow on an annual basis, you're freeing up $350,000 of cash flow with the Key Government Finance annually, starting next year. You're not freeing up $350,000 of cash flow with the others, and I understand your point that you're a very secure, financially sound district, but you're going to be issuing $32 million of general obligation bonds. Your sales tax revenue can buy that debt service levy down, I'm not saying that you're proposing to do that, but having that $350,000 of flexibility every year in your budget is the reason that we chose to go forward with the Key Government Finance versus the Wells Fargo. The Wells Fargo proposal gives you less of an annual savings, and it puts all of the savings at the end, so that you have to wait 14, 13 years before you realize all of that savings, which you could be using for projects now and future projects that maybe you haven't voted on yet. That was our decision and our recommendation.
No, I fully understand that, but we have had a community that has supported us with adequate funding to build out our elementary schools. We will need to go back to the community at some point to ask for additional funds for a high school, and we will need to maximize our funding capability, and that, we don't know the timeframe for, for that, but other than say it's well into the future, you know, we can discuss... say, it's well into the future. You know, we could discuss how, what the definition of that is. But the fact remains that, you know, we're still hoping on the legislature to extend the 2029 deadline. And, you know, so as a financial advisor, I understand the liquidity standpoint completely. I mean, I do that for my own, I make those trade-offs frequently to say, okay, I got interest rate, I got liquidity, there's different things to do. But we're not under, we are a very sound financial standing. We're very well-run. I don't think we have any stress there. The smart decision here is, as a financial advisor, would be to say, I'd rather take $100,000 of savings, additional savings that I can, that I'm realizing, I mean, as soon as I sign the paper, I'm achieving, it's $100,000 worth of savings. Because that's $100,000 of savings today.
And I want to take it a different direction. I understand the financial advisor position, but I think the investment in kids is what we're looking at, too, knowing what's it going to cost if we can have that $350 project now that's going to impact students? What will that cost in 2029 if we don't have that $350,000 for the next 11 years?
But we're not losing it. Dr. Pati, we're not, we're not losing that, because we, we are $100,000 better off today. We're preserving bonding capacity in the future. And so we will be able to tap, because of the fact that we've got those funds available, we will be able to tap those in. When we have the need, we'll be able, we'll be able to tap into those funds. It's a, it's, it's, it's a dollar, I mean, we're comparing all the dollars today.
We are, but it's a long-term investment within what is that going to cost 12 years from now? And if we have that liquidity now that we can be able to have the impact in the projects this year, next year, the year after, I understand, we can always go back and try to recoup or rebond for those dollars. But what is that going to, it's going to add additional cost and burden to the district. But when you look at the liquidity and what projects we know we have as a need across our district, plus the projects that we know can invest back into our students with learning programs, what are those going to cost if we delay those or don't do those because we don't have the liquidity?
And, and I appreciate that. Our biggest, our biggest facility and financial need will be a high school. And that's not something that you can pay for at $350,000 a year.
No, but there's a lot of other projects that we have that will, will need to be done.
But we've, we've got a plan set out to do that. And to be, and to be funded through the PEP.
In my mind, what this really comes down to is, does the board want a little more flexibility or a little less? And I think you, the seven of you know me well enough to know that I'm going to try and give this board and the community all the flexibility it possibly can have. But it's your decision.
And we do gain, even under Wells Fargo, we do gain additional flexibility. There's additional liquidity that's...
Well, here's the now.
No, 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 no. According to the sheet here, we do gain an additional six, well, starts out at $80,000, $74,000. So we do gain additional financial flexibility.
Versus 350 plus every year. So, I mean, it's, it's really the board's decision. And like I said, I think you know me well enough that I'm going to try and give the board and the community as much flexibility as it can, and try and give the board and the community options as we go down the road. But it is your call.
Larry, is, is this what the state of Illinois, and at least one or two other states have done, in not allowing Wells Fargo to bid on public funds?
The state of Iowa has not allowed them to do that.
I realize that.
We actually had that conversation. We decided, because there was a local Wells Fargo bank, even though this is not coming from your local Wells Fargo bank, we did speak to the district to make sure that you had not had any financial difficulties with Wells Fargo, because had that been the case, we would not have allowed them to propose. So, in our conversations, it should be settled. So in our conversations with Wells Fargo and with the placement agent, had they been willing to go out and give you a 2029 maturity, their interest rate would have been higher than the 2.10%. So they're offering you the 2.4, 2.04 to shorten that average life. They want the average life shortened up. We didn't feel that that was what the district was looking for at this time.
I mean, my question is, if we have the $350,000 to be flexible with and to pay off some other things, does that not have the potential to make that $100,000 savings less than $100,000 if we're paying the principal of a loan off or a bond off, and we're saving interest? I mean, I think the $100,000 on paper may be $100,000 today, but if we're able to do other things with that money, it may not be $100,000 because we're saving elsewhere. Is that correct? Would that be accurate to say?
We would assume that as the bond interest rates go, you're being able to lock in low interest rates. But we assume that if the bond interest rates go, your reinvestment rates are going to start to go. So where you are, only getting maybe 0.5% on your money, we would think that would be 1% to 2%. That will help you. But also paying bonds off early, or not having to borrow as much because you have the flexibility of that $350,000 is a very good point.
And plus, you've got to look at it as two years less. So you're lacking in two years less. If we would have run these out, if Wells Fargo would have bid at a 2029, the savings probably would have diminished a lot, just because, just like your house, if you finance it for a shorter term, you get a lower interest rate. And so they're looking at that also.
Doug, can I hurt you?
Yeah, well, I guess, so we're not saving $350,000 a year?
No, you are.
Well, okay, then I really don't understand something that's probably very basic. I multiply 350,000, 250,000 times four, that's the, that's the 1.4 million right there in four years. So...
We'd have to report this in net present value. So what they're saying is the dollar's not going to be worth as...
Right, I understand present value. So is that, so that $350,000 a year is not a present value figure?
No, because you're, you're inputting cash. So you're taking $2.1 million that you have in reserve fund. That 2.1 million cannot be touched until the maturity of the bonds, or at a refunding. So by inflexing the 2.1 million dollars, you're buying down the size of the bond issued. That is producing for you the $350,000 savings.
Right.
So again, it has to be...
But it seems, but I'm afraid we're comparing apples and oranges, or I am, and nobody else in the room is. So I'm comparing $350,000, which is not present value dollars, to 1.4 or 1.5 million dollars, which are present value dollars. And those two numbers really shouldn't be compared. Is that a correct statement?
payments are going to drop $350,000 a year.
Okay.
Because you're putting in $2 million plus $401,000, that's what causes that gross savings to be 350.
Gotcha.
Because you're not refunding the size of the bond issue as it stands today, you're refunding the smaller bond issue because you're...
Because we're counting that money in there. Okay.
Correct. So, so by putting in that 2.6 million, you're reducing the size of the bond issue, which then reduces the annual gross savings.
But is this a correct statement? So $350,000 in liquidity in the next couple of years is a lot of money, and in 10 years, it's not a lot of money necessarily. It's still going to be the constant $350,000 a year, but that's going to be the cost of a phone call in 20 years or whatever. Right? Well, I mean, that's the point of present value, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
And the hope is, and we know the board is very thoughtful and wise in these decisions, and we have that plan in place, but what can we do for $350,000 of extra funding that we have that's going to be impactful for students that in 2027 to 2029, what will that cost? And that's, I understand exactly the $100,000 discussion.
Yeah, I, just so everybody understands, I, I can only support the highest NPV option because that is $100,000 in our favor.
Jeff, when you say 100, you're doing that difference, and you're getting the figure $100,000?
Right.
That's in present value.
That's in present value.
But when do we get it? Is that distributed off the, it's not like somebody's going to write me a check for $100,000.
Cash flows into the future come at different times. So what it does is it's equalizing both of those and saying, what are they worth today?
Right, I gotcha.
As, as, as two different options. And so if we, if we bring those, because you have to put, make sure you're comparing apples and apples.
Right.
So if we're comparing apples to apples, the Wells Fargo is worth $100,000 more to us than the key government finance.
Okay.
So that's, that's $100,000 today.
But it may not become 2027. That's my...
No, 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 no. But it's, it's, that's with the facts that we have today. That's, so I hear the argument as far as, that's $100,000 that, that we have addition to invest in our kids, to further our education. And part of that is that we will need to go back to the bond market to finance a high school at some point. So we will, we are going to have to go out to the bond market regardless of whichever choice we choose on this page, because we cannot fund it from our own sources, unfortunately. So we are going to have to go back out to the bond market. So I hear that we do gain some liquidity advantage by, but given the fact that we're going to have to go back out to the bond market to eventually fund the high school, we have to do that anyway, regardless of these. So let's choose the option that is $100,000 in our favor today and is worth more to us.
I think one point, though, is at $350,000 a year, you do have to take into consideration the comparison between 350 and 8072 on the reinvestment. If you're saving and you're putting it away until you do these projects, because I think your $96,000 will disappear very quickly as the reinvestment rates go up over the next few years.
Again, I'm assuming we have to go back out, we, we can't finance the big, the big nut that we've got to crack in a few years on any of these scenarios. So...
I also want to bring that to everybody's attention. The $350,000 can be used towards general obligation bonds. So we don't know the size of your high school project yet, but as you work through that and you decide on the size, if you are limited with the $4.05, which is the voter referendum limit, the highest limit you can go to, if you have to get up to that, or can't get to that, the number for the dollar of the high school you need, you can issue sales tax revenue bonds. And the only way to do that is to have the liquidity in the sales tax revenue bond fund. And that $350,000 is giving you that liquidity on an annual basis.
And I appreciate that, Maggie, but that $350,000 a year for even 10 years is going to be a drop in the bucket for what we need for a high school. So the only way we're going to really be able to issue new bonds for the high school using the one cent option tax is if the legislature extends it beyond 2029 and frees up additional bonding capacity for us beyond the 2029 cap. So I hear you. I, I guess, just my point is, I'd like to take my $100,000 today. I know I can lock it in today. It is, in my mind, the best financial decision for this moment. And I hope I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just, I just think that's the best financial decision.
And we understand that. I think everybody on the board understands that and appreciates that. I think the, the recommendation that we have is to provide that flexibility and that ability to have liquidity, for all the reasons that we, you know, have been shared. But I think also it's important to know that that liquidity then allows the board to make decisions on that annual basis. Where do we want that money invested? How do we want that invested? What are we going to use that on for potential projects? And more importantly, it's not necessarily, and again, this is not necessarily the best phrase, but putting the, a future board 10 years down the road of having limited cash flow and liquidity now, and having that influx of liquidity in 2027, 2028 being a challenge potentially in the next 12 years. So we're talking decisions that are impactful, decisions that are important, and certainly you're not being difficult by any means. They're good conversations. This was a difficult recommendation, as you can tell. But again, we are making the recommendation based on ensuring that we have cash flows and cash balances so we can handle necessary projects, especially as we look at some small projects coming up, but also some of the major infrastructure needs that we have as a district, which everybody knows what those are. And the, and the major infrastructure challenge is going to be a high school. What are we going to do to, to address the high school need as we look at education long-term in Cedar, Cedar Falls? What we're doing tonight, saving 1.45 million dollars or 1.54 million dollars, is not going to necessarily change what the direction is we're going to have to pursue as a, as a school district when it comes to that next phase.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So the scenario you kind of just played out, are you saying that if we have that 350 whatever thousand dollars, we can, if we would go to do a high school, we can possibly, because we'll have that, we can use that towards a payment, we can bond for, we might have to bond for less from the public in that high school bond, because we have this money over here we can put towards it, or is that not?
No. So you're correct in the fact that what we're saying is, sales tax revenue can buy down a general obligation. So maybe you still go out and are bonding for the same amount, but you may be able to buy the debt service levy down. Because you're going to be levying the property taxes on the citizens, and that 350,000 would give you the flexibility. If the board decided on no other projects or had no other needs for that 350,000, then you potentially then could buy down the debt service levy by that 350,000. That then would impact all of your taxpayers, and you would be paying, you know, you levy, you're going to levy for the $32 million. If you levy something in the future or decide not to do anything in the future, then that 350,000 could be used to buy that tax rate down.
But with all due respect, Maggie, $350,000 a year, or I get in 2028 and 2028, I get 3.4 million dollars that I have free and clear to bond against. So what's the difference between $350,000 a year or 3.4 million dollars that I have free and clear?
But the 3.4 million is just debt capacity. You still have to borrow the money.
It's, we're talking the same, those are apples and apples, just the timing is different. $350,000 or 3.4 million in 2028 and 2029, that's apples and apples.
But it comes back down to cash flow in...
Yeah, but, but with all due respect, that's, your, your, your argument of $350,000 a year isn't any different than 3.4 million in 2028 and 2029?
It is not. But we feel that the district is looking to do something before 2029. That's 14 years down the road.
Well, absolutely, absolutely. Again, we will have to issue additional bonds. So whether we have $350,000 of additional capacity per year, we have 3.4 million of, of debt capacity in 2028 and 2029, those are, those are the same thing.
The difference I see is the timing, though. That is 12 years. I mean, I don't like us having our hands tied for 12 years.
It's, it's...
So is it a correct statement to say that we're paying $100,000 for increased flexibility, and you're saying that's too expensive?
Yes.
Is that a correct statement?
Yeah, you're paying, you're paying $100,000 extra.
So I would ask you then...
But you're, for extra flexibility sooner, but as far as bonding capacity, it doesn't really change.
So I guess, what would be your price? How much would you be willing to pay for extra flexibility?
Well, I don't think we should pay any for extra flexibility because...
But if it was a dollar, you would say yes. So there's a number somewhere.
I would say as long as it has an NPV savings, that we should take the greatest NPV savings. Again, and the premise there is, it doesn't change our bonding capacity into the future, whether it's $350,000 a year or 3.4 million in 2028 and 2029, those, those are equal. And we are going to have to go back out to the bond market, for example, when we fund a high school. Regardless of these scenarios.
Right.
So that's why I'm saying, the, to pay, to, to, to pay $100,000 extra for that flexibility is, is a mute point in my mind, because under either scenario, we're going to have to go out, under any scenario, we're going to have to go out to the bond markets and, and ask for additional funds in order to fund, for example, the high school.
But don't we spend money on things other than the high school? So I'm saying, let's not talk about 2019. Let's talk about 2020.
If...
Something happens.
2020, something happens, we will still have bonding capacity. We can go, we could, we could go out, and these fine people here could go out, and they would be able to sell a bond for us with the extra capacity that we've got, and the fact that we've got 3.4 million available in 2028, 29. And, and that would be funds that, that these fine people could, they would be, we would be able to bond against that, just like we'd be able to bond if we had $350,000 of funds available of that flexibility each year. So that's why I'm saying, the extra flexibility isn't worth anything to me, because you have the bonding capacity under either scenario.
Right.
So you have the flexibility under either scenario.
But I think the extra flexibility leads into the coverage factor. So you have to meet the 120 coverage factor. So you only have the flexibility of that 120 coverage factor into the future. So if something happens in 2020, and you need to go back out and borrow sales tax revenue bonds, you can only borrow up to what you have in the 120 coverage, meaning when you additionally borrow bonds, the old debt and the new debt must be at one point, you must, you must set aside 1.2 times the amount. So then you're limited, because if you only have 80 to 50,000 a year of annual savings, that limits you versus the $350,000 a year of annual savings. So a sales tax revenue bond is all based on coverage. It's not based on debt capacity. It's based on the coverage factor. And that coverage factor is, I have these revenues coming in, I have these bonding expenses going out, and I must meet 1.2 times that amount that's going out to have a coverage factor. So if you have $350,000 of additional savings... So if you have $350,000 of additional savings in that pot every year, you increase your flexibility to borrow more in 2020 if something comes up and happens.
And I think our intent with this is that flexibility and cash flow, so we don't have to borrow money in 2020 unless it's for a high school, because we don't want to have additional dollars go to refinance or financing something that hopefully we can cash flow and not have to expend money on some of those services. So I think it's a cash flow challenge. I understand, you know, over 12 to 13 years, there could be a $100,000 savings, but if we can have that cash flow dollars, we can look at how do we spend that money wisely now or save that money. Hopefully, it's going to allow us to buy down some of those potentially larger projects into the future. That's the entire intent of our recommendation, and our recommendation is to move forward with the key government finance and look at the overall savings of 1.45 million dollars as we refinance these bonds.
Any other questions, comments? Susan, Suzie? Any questions for Sphere Financial? All right, do I have a motion?
Yes.
This will be a roll call vote.
I move the Board of Directors of the Cedar Falls Community School District approve the resolution directing the sale of approximately 15,600,000 school infrastructure sales, service and use tax revenue refunding bonds, Series 2016, as presented.
And just to clarify, that is with key financial services, correct? Okay.
Thank you, Susan. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Jim, and now we'll have a roll call vote.
Okay, Mrs. Coyle.
Yes.
Mr. Haseman.
No.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Dr. Canyon.
Yes.
Mrs. Lance.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Leeper.
Yes.
And Dr. Shaw.
I abstain.
I'm sorry.
I abstain.
Okay.
This is a really good thing for the district, and I know we all agree with that, because this is tremendous with what it's going to allow for us to save as a school district. I know annually, we've looked at refinancing, we come back, and this is the right time to do this for this kind of a savings for our district, for our students. So thank you for all your work. Thanks for the great discussion and-
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
So this is great.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. This is the kind of discussion that we have at the board table, even when we were at the administration building. So we're just fortunate that we can be here and that we can discuss this and look at each other and walk out of here and know that we're discussing these for all the right reasons. And we know all the right reasons. It's because it's our community and our children. So with that, thank you all who participated in the discussion, and again, thank you both for being here tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on then to item H. This is a probably more of a Conrad show, maybe, so all by himself down there.
You want to do G?
G.
Oops, I'm sorry, I jumped right over. G. Approval of the MOU with the UNI, City of Cedar Falls, for the tennis court projects. I apologize.
And I guess that's me.
I just do.
You can throw that up on the screen, Janelle. As you're aware, we've been working with the University of Northern Iowa and the City of Cedar Falls towards replacement and construction of new tennis courts. The picture that you see on the screen shows an architect's concept of what that would look like. The project is broken down into three parts. The first part is in green, and that consists of constructing eight tennis courts, and those are concrete post-tension slabs, which means that they're supposed to last significantly longer than a standard concrete court, with a chain link fence and some additional sidewalks, and then there has to be some stormwater and electrical utilities and some other things brought to the site. The second phase of the project, which we're not looking at funding right out of the chute, the big part of that is the installation of exterior lighting so that the courts can be used during nighttime. And then the third phase, which is in the pink, would be, it's designed in such a way that four additional tennis courts could be added in the future. On Phase 1, the total project is estimated to be at just over 1.5 million, of which we have jointly applied to Blackhawk County Gaming for a grant to offset, as we were notified that they, Blackhawk County has granted our request. So now we're looking at, between the three entities, coming up with approximately $1 million to fund the project. So that hopefully will be divided roughly by a third. And so our plan would be to move forward. What we have in front of you tonight is the memorandum of understanding that all three parties would enter into, which would be that we would work towards developing a 2080 agreement between the three parties for the operation and maintenance of the facility once it's constructed. One other note, two of the eight courts that are being constructed will have pickleball lines on them for the public to use as well.
And this is a continuation of a discussion we had late spring with the board. Both you and I and the city were represented at that meeting. In our 10-year physical plant and equipment planning that we had roughly now nine years ago, Robinson Dresser tennis courts were within that 10-year plan to be replaced. We know that those courts, if you've been out to Robinson Dresser, are in need of repair. I think at that time, at that board meeting, we shared some slides, some of the cracks, some of the gaps, some of the fencing challenges, really some safety concerns that are within that facility. We know that that cost to replace those tennis courts at Robinson Dresser were going to be in the range of $700,000 to $800,000 to replace those tennis courts. We are trying to be as efficient and hopefully as effective with our tax dollars as possible. And one of the best ways to do that is to cost share, to look at efficiencies and to partner with other entities like the city, like you and I, and that's certainly our intent with this as we move forward. As you can see, you know, versus Phase 1 costs will be potentially $300,000 to $400,000 out of pocket expenses for the district, splitting that three ways with the Phase 1 costs versus $750,000. So it's kind of really nice to say that we just saved 1.45 million to the district. Our intent with this cost sharing is to save another $300,000 to $400,000 of potential expense that we know we're going to have to have to be able to have the facilities and save some facilities for our students.
So the total cost of the project, Phase 1, 2, and 3?
Well, Phase 3 is down the road quite a ways, I believe. Phase 2 is in that 400,000 to 500,000 range. The group is working on trying to solicit additional grant opportunities for that. The biggest piece of that, obviously, is going to be the lighting.
I was going to say, Phase 2 is the lighting, right?
Yeah, exterior lighting. And then there also, and the second part of it, is construction of a small, they call it a gazebo, but really it is, is it's going to be a shared storage shed for all three parties to use. And then we would actually have some bleachers for guests, or when the high school is holding the meets there, or when the university is holding their meets there, that sort of thing. So it's worked out very well. It's been a very collaborative process working with the university and the city with all of this. When they need the courts works very well with when we need the courts. We really only need the tennis courts from roughly spring break to the end of the school year, right after school, and that fits in very well with the university's need for those courts for their tennis program as well. So at the time, it just seems to be working very well.
And I believe in, I think the collaboration is wonderful, so I want to be very careful with my next, my next question, because I think it's fantastic that we're partnering with the university and partnering with the city. That's fantastic. If our use of the tennis courts is really only from spring break till the end of the school year, so roughly March, April, and May, is, and the rest of the year, the university and the city has access to them, and they're located on university property, I guess just talk me through, you know, I mean, from a cost share standpoint, if us picking up a third of the cost when March, April, May is a fourth of the year, now, of course, we have students maybe that would show up, but I guess, and again, they're great partners with us, I guess, but, you know, we have to first and foremost look out for the interest of the Cedar Falls School District, not at the detriment of any of our partners, because they've been wonderful partners. But I guess, why should it be a third, or why shouldn't it be a fourth, or a fifth, based on the amount that we as a school district, and it's not located on our property, and we, you know, I guess just kind of talk me through that, why this is, why that makes sense for us? I mean, I, granted, we're getting, again, I'm not, I don't want to keep talking, but we, you know, it's a good deal for us, it is. But why is that, that portion of our cost share fair for us?
I think, and again, Mr. Nevska and I were trying to make eye contact, who is going to answer this question, but it's a very fair question. And I think that has been kind of the mindset of a lot of communities, a lot of entities across not only Iowa but the nation, where, you know, if we are using this space or only using this space X amount of time, should somebody else fund it, pay for it, we can potentially rent it. And then that's why you have some redundancy in services, redundancy of facilities across communities, especially communities our size. You know, I think our intent is not to say, well, it's on their site, and I know that's not your intent, so let's just go ahead and have them build it, then we will, we will rent it, we will use it, we'll pay them a slight fee every year. I think the intent is to go in so we don't have the redundancy that we are using the best of taxpayer dollars and doing that in what we think is a very fair memorandum of understanding, and hopefully then in the future, a 2080 agreement on shaping what is that use and how are we going to joint share that and maintain that space effectively long term. You know, right now, they have eight or 10 tennis courts, we have eight tennis courts, we, in fact, more when you look at Pete. Do we need that many tennis courts across our community? How do we make sure that it's efficient use of space, efficient cost for our taxpayers? Because it's all taxpayer dollars. So that's really kind of the answer, is we want to shape this in a way that's feasible for the overall cost, usable for all the entities that want to use it, you and I, community, students. But then also make sure that it's going to be high quality, that's going to not only see an impact for five years from now, but hopefully 15 years from now, because the quality of construction can be much better when we have multiple entities that are going to cost share.
And another thing we did when we were in the research phase of all of this was, we did talk to the tennis coaches, both at the university and here at the school district, about the number of participants, and so we had a pretty decent number as far as number of participants, both from the university side and from the school district side, and it was pretty even, the number of kids that we have participating in tennis, both boys and girls, and the number of kids that the university has participating in men's and women's tennis. And so the city sort of looked at that and said, well, you know, that probably is about what we would have over the course of a year. But they have, the city had a much more difficult time determining how many residents would use a tennis court, where the university and the school district could come up with a number based on past practice, number of kids on a team, that sort of thing. And that's, that was part of the driving force behind that.
And Jeff, when you're looking at the, those three months, you have to realize in the winter, no one's using it. So you have to subtract those months out.
That would put you at a third, a third, a third.
Yeah.
I think the location is fabulous compared to what we've put up with for how many of the years we were out on the prairie. And I think it'll get utilized a lot better. And I don't know whether phys ed classes use this or not, but I would assume that it gives us flexibility being closer.
It's a lot closer.
A lot closer. And that's one of the things that we heard from our coaches, that right now where the Robinson Dresser is located at is a very windy location and not necessarily conducive to playing tennis. So this will be in a much better location and hopefully going to provide a more competitive area for competitions.
And, go ahead. What happens to our existing courts out there? Because I know they're in terrible shape.
My recommendation's going to be to the board that we remove them. Once the new tennis courts are completed and we're able to start using them, that'll be my recommendation. We have a cost estimate to take that back out and turn it into green space. But that would be probably not until the summer of 2018 before we'd be able to do that. Maybe the fall of 2017, but it would be that late before we'd be able to start doing that.
Our liability out there is going to continue to increase, especially with some of the potential challenges and shape of that facility.
Yeah.
You alluded to it, but maybe you can talk a little bit more about the governance structure, the stability between the three entities that would partake in this, so that 10 years from down the road, one of the entities says, you know, I think I'd just take control of this, and the other two of you are out, whether that's us or somebody else. But just, could you talk about the governance and how our interests are protected?
Well, we're in the beginning stages of working that out. That's what the 2080 will put together, and we're going to talk about everything about, you know, it's on university property, so the university's going to lead, have the lead on this. And there'll be a committee of somebody from the city and somebody from the school district to represent that on governance of the site, who's going to, the university will take care of the maintenance, and then backcharge the other two entities on a prorated basis as determined by the 2080, and that may not necessarily be a third, a third, a third. It'll be dependent upon use, and so there'll be a tracking of that. So that's, they're basically, it's their property, they're taking the lead on it. But it'll be as long as the 2080 is in force, there are some questions that have come up about how long the 2080 can be in force. Can we do a 1,000-year 2080 as an example? Well, our attorneys will look into that to determine what that'll be.
So the 2080?
Right. It's the specific Iowa code.
Chapter 28.
Chapter 28.
All right. Thank you. You're speaking code to me.
Sorry. Yes, and that is the joint use agreements underneath Iowa Code section. So we always call them 2080 agreements. So the 2080 agreement is actually a legal binding document that will be agreed upon with the exact language. So this MOU just says we will move forward with the 2080 agreement to be able to help specify what that will look like for cost sharing. And again, with tennis courts, what is the life cycle span? What is the life cycle cost? You know, we probably won't have a 1,000-year 2080 involved with this. I know that was done and said in jest. But again, we'll have to plan out, you know, if this is a 30-year project or a 50-year project, that 2080, we want to make sure is in place for the length of what we expect that facility to be in use.
And that would be no different than the 2080 agreement we have with use of the pools?
Correct.
Correct.
The city's-
Almost 40 years.
Correct. So it's pretty common, a 2080, it's just making sure that the language kind of stands the test of time, and then there's a mechanism within the 2080 to continue to revisit if things change. And sometimes it does, but then that has to be a very precise process on what that will look like.
I actually think if I remember right from the pools, too, when there was maintenance that needed to happen and we had to really spend a large amount to make some repairs, then we sat down with the city and those, that conversation took place, and then we moved forward from there.
Correct.
Yep.
And you did say the Blackhawk County Gaming Commission has approved our grant, yes?
$500,000 for this project. Yes.
Blackhawk County Gaming Commission, fantastic.
So what we're signing, what we are agreeing to this evening is to proceed with this MOU that, and obviously any final agreement would need to come back to the board for approval.
The 2080 agreement will need to come back to the board for its approval, yes.
Good questions.
Yep. Another example of trying to save taxpayer dollars, which is very exciting and certainly an opportunity to have really a joint use state-of-the-art facility for kids and for our community across Cedar Valley, Cedar Falls.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the memorandum, I'm going to start over. I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Regents, State of Iowa, for the benefit of the University of Northern Iowa, City of Cedar Falls, and the Cedar Falls Community School District for the design, construction, and management of a shared-use outdoor tennis complex as presented.
Thank you, Jenny. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, now moving on to the information report, AYP or the Iowa assessment.
Well, I'm not sure this is going to be as an exciting discussion as you've had. I'm not going to be able to save the district $350,000 with this report, or talk that way, but actually, there'll be a couple changes in the report tonight. First off, as you can see, Pam is not here, so I'm giving the report by myself, so I'll do my, my best to make sure our secondary schools look really good. At Pam's expense. But the second thing, or the second change, is that you may be aware that the Elementary and Secondary Act, or Education Act, which we commonly refer to as No Child Left Behind, has been reauthorized by the federal government into what they call the Every Student Succeeds Act, as the new educational law governing education around the country. And so as a result of that, currently, the Federal Department of Education is working with states to determine the expectations and the accountability for, for states. So that means for us at this point in time, that individual schools and districts are no longer required to meet annual yearly progress, or AYP, as we've become to refer to it, those goals that were a result of, of our performance on state assessments. So, and AYP was used every year to determine which schools were, or districts were in need of assistance. And so for the current school year, schools who were identified during the previous year that were in need of assistance, they will remain at that same level for this year, and districts are, continue to be required to continue with whatever supports they had in place. So we aren't sure what the future will hold with regards to that federal legislation, but at the same time, we'll move forward with that. So tonight, instead of providing the board with 500-plus slides of how our students did on the Iowa assessments, and every class, every subgroup, every cohort, basically, what I'm going to do tonight is give you kind of an overview of our Iowa assessment data that we collect, show you some examples of what that data looks like, and be able to show you just some of the things that we do analyze on an annual basis because of that. So if we could pull up the PowerPoint. If I got this right. Basically, let me give you a little bit of background on the Iowa assessments themselves. The state does require the assessments are given to all students in grades three through eight and 11. In Cedar Falls, of course, we choose to assess all of our students in grades three through 11, so we include the ninth and 10th graders in our assessments as well. There are three tests, basically, that are administered as part of the Iowa assessments, and those are in reading, mathematics, and science. We do have the option to administer those assessments either during the fall, during mid-year, or in the spring. And we, of course, as of 2011 and 12, in Cedar Falls, we assess all of our students in the spring. The Iowa assessments underwent a major revision in 2011 and 12, and I'll talk about those a little bit later, but it did have an impact on proficiency levels, not only in our district, but across the state. And as I mentioned earlier, right now, the Iowa assessments are no longer used to determine annual yearly progress, or AYP, so that, that piece of it is not a part of our state assessments anymore. They will be something that will be in the future, of course. Last year, this is probably the last year that we'll be using the Iowa assessments as they are currently in place, and I'll talk a little bit about that towards the end of the presentation as well. So in analyzing the results, you may be aware that in the last week or so, the Des Moines Register, as well as Cedar Falls Waterloo Courier, ran articles that focused on the increase or decrease of grade level proficiency from 2015 to 2016. And certainly, while that data is important, and every school collects and analyzes that kind of data, I would caution everyone to be careful on drawing too much of a conclusion on looking at one year of data. First off, the data shows different students. For example, the students that were in fifth grade last year are different than the students that were in fifth grade the year before. So you're kind of, you're kind of analyzing apples to oranges when you look at one-year data. And secondly, most of our students, or each cohort of students that move through our district, they all have some differences in demographics, they have unique characteristics or needs, and therefore, looking at one year versus one year, again, maybe comparing apples to oranges. At the district and the building level in Cedar Falls, we do collect and analyze grade level data. We identify potential areas of concern or need for additional support, but we'd want to analyze more than a single year before we start making too many conclusions with that. Our main focus as a district, especially in the last several years, has been focused on student growth from year to year. We want to see every student grow from year to year, whether individually or well as collectively, and not simply be concerned with proficiency, which we believe is a fairly low bar, especially for our students in Cedar Falls. We want to, we want to see growth in all of our students at all levels of achievement. And so tonight, I'm going to show you some of those types of data that we collect, and give you some examples of what those look like. We will look at some proficiency data, looking at students that are non-proficient, proficient, and advanced proficient. We'll look at some comparative data between other districts across the state. We will look at what we call cross-sectional cohorts, which are basically looking at grade level from year to year to year. We will look at some subgroup data, I'll show you some examples of some subgroup data that we collect, and the focus that we have on those. And then we'll really focus more of our attention on growth data, where we look at simple cohort growth, and I'll explain what that is, as well as expected growth, and, and what goes into the expectations that students have from year to year in terms of their growth. So to start with, to determine proficiency or advanced proficiency, this isn't something we just come up with as a district, of course. That is all determined at the level, at the state level. And you can see by this chart here that these happen to be the scores, the standard scores that students must earn at each grade level to be classified as proficient. So if you look at this, for example, a student that is in the sixth grade would need to have a standard score of 213 or above to be classified as proficient. And then that same student would have to, to be at 264 or above, or greater than that, to be classified as advanced proficient. And that, those levels, again, are set by the state. They are a little bit different for math, as they will for science. But again, we have no control over that, that is all determined by the state of Iowa, those levels of proficiency. This is an example, in fact, the next three slides will show really just the most basic of our data. It's just grade level proficiency for reading, math, and science for 2015. It shows a single-year look at how students in each grade level perform based on their NSS score. So you can see, these slides here basically show the number of percents, this one here shows the number and percent of, of students in each elementary grade who were considered non-proficient, which is the dark red at the bottom, proficient, which is the lighter red in the middle, and then the advanced proficient, which is the light pink at the top. At the bottom of each bar graph, you can see the grade level, as well as the number, actual number of students that were assessed during that particular, for that grade level. This, again, is just a sample of what math looks like, and this happens to be our grades seven, eight, and nine. And the bottom, again, is non-proficient, the middle bar is, is proficient, and then the high bar is advanced proficiency. And then this, of course, would be an example of, of grades 10 and 11, again, looking at non-proficient, proficient, and advanced proficiency. I mentioned earlier, we also look at some comparison data. The next slides that we'll look at compare how our students compare on these assessments in proficiency with students across the area, as well as across the state. I'll go through these fairly quickly, because you'll, you'll get to see exactly what they are as we move through them. This is just our elementary reading in grades three, four, five, and six, and again, it looks just at those students that are proficient, which is the students that are in proficient and advanced proficiency, and it compares our students with the AEA, schools in the AEA, as well as across the state of Iowa. So you can see the left side of, of the bar graph is Cedar Falls, the middle graph is the, is the AEA students, and the right side of the graph on each grade level are the state of Iowa. That same data for our elementary students in math, and then you can see the same data in science for our elementary students. So you can see, especially at the elementary, our students are performing, we have, we have a higher percentage of proficient students in, in all three of those tests, or those areas, as students in the AEA and the state. This is our secondary students in reading and math, and also in science. In addition to this kind of comparison to the AEA and the state, we typically look at our proficiency as compared to some other districts across the state that we like to compare ourselves to. Those are schools that are maybe a little bit more in, comparable in size or demographics than we are. Unfortunately, it takes a lot longer to put that data together, because it's not as readily available until the state releases it, and usually, it's district level, and it's not, it's not data that we get basically, school to school across the state. The next area that I mentioned earlier is, is what we call cross-sectional cohort date, data, and this is just data that, or proficiency data that we look at a single grade level from year to year. As I mentioned earlier, with the Des Moines Register and the Courier articles, they compare just two years of data, last year, or two years ago versus this past year. When we look at this data, we like to look at least at a five-year look. And the reason for that is that by looking at that kind of data over several years, it flattens out the discrepancies from year to year that may tend to skew your data. And I'll try to make an example of what that looks like as we go. We do use this kind of data to analyze whether our curriculum or our essential learnings at a specific grade level need to be reviewed or analyzed for alignment to the Iowa core. So if you, again, look at this data, this happens to be our, an example of the sixth grade reading data for the past five years. I want you to focus your attention on, on 11, 12, and 12 and 13. If we would have just focused on those two years of, of performance, we might have been asking the question, what happened? Because as you noticed, that our, our number of students, or our percent of students that were non-proficient increased, and the percent of students that are advanced proficient actually decreased. But by looking at this data over a five-year span, it gives you a truer picture of our trend line of how our students are performing at that sixth grade over the course of time. So you can, you can kind of see that the trend line would say that we're decreasing the number of non-proficient students while increasing the, the advanced proficiency students. This is similar data, looking at math for three, grade three, again, for the last five years, and I think, again, that same trend line data is, is comparable to what you saw in the reading for sixth grade. And then this would be an example of ninth grade, looking at that same data, but this is science achievement data. As a general rule, I would say that what we'd like to see is a trend line where the non-proficient is decreasing and the advanced proficiency is increasing. The next area that we look at is, is analyzing our subgroup data. And again, you can see some of the areas that we look at, we analyze a number of subgroup data on their performance on these Iowa assessments. As you can imagine, because of our demographics, some of our subgroups have very few students, especially when you look at a single grade or a building. So this can really result in a wide variance of data from year to year, since maybe one or two students could really change what that data looks like in small subgroups. Therefore, we, we do tend to focus on some of the subgroups that we have more students in. Typically, that's our students with special needs, or students on an IEP, as well as students on free or reduced lunch. And I'll show you kind of what that looks like as well. Go back here just one quick, here it is. This, again, is just a quick one-year look, this is probably one of the most basic data of, of just our proficiency data of all of our free and reduced lunch students in 2016, from third grade through 11th grade. And so, again, it's just a one-year look at this proficiency. This, again, then, would take that same, take a similar grade level for that same subgroup, and this happens to be our, our special needs students, students on IEPs, and it goes back five years. So we can, again, analyze the data on how our special needs students are doing as, at each grade level over time. This, then, would be an example of one of our subgroups that doesn't have a lot of students in it, and so if we would, you know, if you look at it at single grade level, you can see that for the last five years, we've averaged about 50 students, you know, between 45 and 50 students in grades seven, eight, and nine combined. If we would only look at one grade level, that would only be 10 to 15 students, a pretty small sample that we would, would not want to, we wouldn't be, want to be able to draw a whole lot of conclusions on that data. So we combine these to, by grade spans, and look at the data that way. Again, we look at the same data from a comparison standpoint, this happens to be our special needs students, and comparing that data with other students in the AEA, as well as across the state, and this happens to be reading. But really, what we try to do, as much as anything I mentioned earlier, is focus on growth. Growth of our students wherever they fell one year, how are we determining what they, how much they grew between that year and the next year and beyond? So the remaining examples that I'll show you really focus on growth, as opposed to maybe one year, or even a five-year look at a certain grade level, or even looking just at straight proficiency. The first thing you'll see is cohort growth, and what we call simple cohort growth, and what this does is it compares results or classes of students as they move through our system, or as they progress through the system, all the way from grade three, when they first start taking, taking the assessment, up through grade 11. And, and this first few charts will just measure the percent of students that are proficient, either non-proficient, proficient, or advanced proficient each year that that group of students moves through the system. Again, the proficiency is determined by those state NSS scores, those, those national This would be a look at our current senior class, and it happens to be math, but it could be, you know, I could have shown either reading or, or science. But what this does is it tracks these students from the last time they took the test on the right-hand side column, which is their 11th grade year, all the way back to their third grade year. And so you can see the percent of students that were non-proficient, proficient, and advanced proficient each of those years that this cohort group moved through our system. Now, you need, you need to keep in mind a couple of points. First off, while this follows a particular class from grades three through 11, it not necessarily is the same students from, that were enrolled in third grade still at the 11th grade. Because of mobility and those kinds of things, we have students move in and out of our district on an annual basis, and so they're not necessarily the same individual students, but it's the same cohort of students. And that's why we call it a simple cohort group. Second thing is, I want you to notice there's a black line in between their, I think it's grade sixth and seventh. That is the year that the Iowa assessments went under a major revision. And across the state, we saw a dip in proficiency because of that revision. The revision was, was intended to become, that the Iowa assessments would become more aligned with the Iowa core, and I think they had been, but at the same time, it really threw a lot of schools for a loop the first couple of years that that assessment was, was revised. years that that assessment was revised because of that. And you can see that, and this is an example that, you know, you can see in 2012, our assessments did dip as well, but then you can also see that after two or three years, we started getting back on track again.
Dan, well, that happened again with the Smarter Balance.
I'll talk about that. The tough part about there is that's such a different assessment.
Right.
It'll be much different. The second area I want to show you or talk to you about is what we call expected growth by growth bands. In the past several years, we have really dug deeper into the achievement levels of our students on the Iowa assessments to get a better understanding of where they are and where they're compared, where they should be. By analyzing that NSS growth by what we call, by analyzing it as compared to what the predetermined expected growth is that is also set by the state, we can better gauge where our students are and where they need to go from year to year. So if you look at basically what expected growth is, is that students, depending on where they score on that NSS standard, they will be placed into one of five levels or bands. And as a result of that, wherever they fall into that, then the state determines what the expected growth for that student would be for that next year. To better explain what that is, if you look at this here, these are actually the five bands. So let's say, for example, you would have a student that is at 213 NSS score in reading at the seventh grade level. The state would say that that same student is expected to grow by nine points to a two, or, yeah, to a 222 as an eighth grader. And so that'd be reflected. If that student makes that kind of growth, then they have met the expected growth. But therein lies the drawback to only looking at expected growth. Because if you play this same student out all the way till their 11th grade year, that student's score now is at 241, they're still in the second lowest level of achievement. So they're not catching up to their peers. So we're really focused on saying that same group of students or that student itself needs to go more than expected growth in a year so they can catch up so that by the time that student is a graduate of our school district, they are now college and career-ready. And so our focus has been on really looking at expected growth and exceeding expected growth as they move through. So if, again, you look at a couple charts here, this is basically looking at what is the average expected growth for our students in each of those bands versus what the expected growth is. So this happens to just be science for students. This is an example of science from grades seven through eight. You can see at the bottom there that in the lowest band, we only had four students. Those four students had an average growth of 32 points, when the expected growth was 4.5 points. So they blew it out of the water in terms of their expected growth. But understand what I mentioned earlier. That's only four students. So one or two students could have skewed, could skew that data. Also, as you look through, you can really see that when you look at the bottom two and even the bottom three of those bands, that's, we don't have as many students in those. The good news for our school district is the vast majority of our students are usually in those top two or three bands. And so the bad news as part of that is that when we look at the expected growth of those students at those highest levels, you'll see that it's not exceeding or meeting the expected growth we would like to see. So this, and even though you look at this data, you can see that our average growth does exceed the expected growth. But again, it's just, that's just looking at averages. This gives you a little better picture because this chart here actually shows the number of students at a particular grade level in each of those bands and whether or not they met the expected or exceeded the expected growth. So as you look at this data, again, you look at the bottom level, we had 13 students in that lowest level a year ago. All 13 of those students met expected growth. But remember, we want them to exceed expected growth. But that's a start. At the same time, you look at the other end of the spectrum with our highest achieving students, those ones that are in that 90 to the 90th percentile, that NSS score higher than a 221 at grades three and four. These students, we had 61 of those students that didn't make expected growth. Now, understand, the bar's higher for those students because to be able to maintain your status in that highest level band, you have to increase your NSS score by many more than you would if you're in one of those lower bands. But again, it's one of those that if we're really working for our students to meet or exceed expected growth, we have to find a way to challenge all of our students, whether they're at the highest level of achievement or the lowest level. So then, looking back a little bit further, we take a larger look at the picture of that. This, again, would be a chart of just looking at all of the students in grades seven, eight, and nine. Did they meet expected growth from last year to this year? And you can see that's, therein lies our concern a little bit, is that the percent of students that met expected growth actually decreased in each of these three grade levels. So we were looking at that, the fact that the vast majority of those students are in those top two or three bands, which is good news, but they're not meeting the expected growth that we would like to see them have. This is kind of another look, and this basically shows each grade level and at all of our grade levels, three through 11, and whether or not they met our math expected growth from one year to the next. And as you can see in this chart, blue is good and red is not so good. And so as we look at all of our kids collectively in each grade level, we realize we've got quite a few students that are not meeting or exceeding that expected growth. Again, the vast majority of those are in those highest bands. So if we really just kind of put together and, you know, what are our biggest takeaways from this? Again, as we have in recent history, our students continue to outperform the students that are in the AEA and the state, and we're proud of that. Overall, the proficiency of our non-proficient students continues to decrease, and that's what we continually want to work on so that all of our students reach that proficiency level. While there continues to be gaps with proficiency in some of our subgroups, we do see that gap shrinking. And again, that allows us to make sure that all of our students are learning at higher levels. I talked about the growth piece. It does allow us to really break down and look at students, skill by skill, individual student by student, to really look at their individual growth as opposed to whether they're just proficient or not. I mentioned again earlier, the NSS growth or that expected growth of our lowest achieving students continues to exceed where they need to be. And so they are catching up. At the same time, as I mentioned also, the growth of our highest achieving student are the ones we want to focus on to get better. And that's been a real focus, especially the last couple of years on all of our students, is that we want to challenge all of our students to do better.
Dan, if I can interject real quick, going back to that previous slide, and it's that fourth bullet down that I think is so vitally important. And it's data we can't share publicly or show the board, but the ability to track every individual student, where they're at, what their growth trend line is, what we need to do to ensure that every single kid, skill by skill, student by student, grows and is growing at the level we expect them to, is something that's very, very exciting. So I know Dan highlighted that bullet, but it's such an important bullet that people don't get a chance to necessarily see or witness, but really, tracking student learning, student achievement specifically at each student's level is extremely important.
Before you, because this is a whole subject in and of itself.
Right, you're right.
So we've received some funding to create a teaching coaching staff. I'm not using.
Instructional coaches.
I'm not using the right nomenclature, but so how, what impact do you think that that will have? Because we've got additional resources of, you know, coaching teachers to be able to, you know, apply. Is there some focus on some of the weaknesses that you've identified here?
Yeah, I think our instructional coaches will help in a number of ways of supporting our staff. Improving their instructional practices, assisting them with aligning their essential learnings with the Iowa Core or with national standards, determining what assessments kids should be, or what assessment teachers should be using in assessing those essential learnings. I think we'll be much more aligned, much more in tune with good, solid instructional practices by having those instructional coaches in place. So it'll be, it is already being a benefit to our district as we move through. Whether that translates into higher test scores, you know, you know, what's, you know, you'd like to see a direct correlation, but, you know, that remains to be seen. But I would, I'm assuming we will. Again, a lot of that's going to be dependent on what the assessments look like in the next several years.
I'll use that, you can use that as your segue into.
This is a good segue into the final slide. Basically, the Iowa assessments, this year will be the last year that the Iowa assessments will be administered to our students. So all of us that took the ITBS and ITED and now the Iowa assessments, all that's going away. And the state of Iowa will have a new assessment starting in 2017, 18, called the Smarter Balanced Assessments. There's a lot we do not know about that assessment yet. We're continuing to learn about it, but we do know several things. Number one, it'll be an online assessment, and that'll be new for our students because they haven't had to take online assessments, especially for a state assessment before. Now, at the elementary level, we're doing the FAST assessment, which is an online assessment, so at least a lot of our elementary students are getting used to that. It's what they also call a computer-adapted test, which means it levels the difficulty of the test based on the student's answers. So if a student misses a couple of questions, it will ratchet the level of difficulty down a little bit so students will not get frustrated while they're doing the assessment. It's similar to the MAP testing, if you've heard of that before, that a lot of students or a lot of schools give across the country. There is, it is proven already to be more aligned with the Iowa Core, much more aligned in what the Iowa assessments have been. There is increased rigor. Our students will have to think a lot more deeply when they take these assessments than looking at simply multiple choice questions where they can sometimes rule out the most crazy answers and then figure out a way to select the one that best fits. It's going to include some writing components and some performance tasks as a part of the assessments. The good news, it provides us with some practice tests, some interim tests that students can take during the course of the year to lead you up to the summative assessment that will be taken in the spring. They've also provided a multitude of resources for our teachers in what they call a digital library that will allow teachers to be able to have access to resources and instructional practices and so forth to help students prepare for these assessments. But at the same time, again, as we look at this totally different kind of assessment, we're not sure what kind of data we're going to get back yet and how that will compare to the data we've been collecting for years with the Iowa assessments. And so are we at a point where we're going to be establishing new baseline data for all of our students? We don't know that yet. And that will be some decisions we'll have to look at down the road to see, how do we align where our students were this year on the Iowa assessments versus where they will be next year on the Smarter Balanced Assessments? So.
Is the Smarter Balance only for the state of Iowa? Will there be other states?
There'll be other states. There are already other states that assess using the Smarter Balanced. Iowa will be, it'll just be the first year in Iowa next year.
How widespread is the, you know, how many other states or districts?
I'll tell you the number of states. Is Minnesota, I think, maybe one of them.
That's data that's been a while since I've looked at. There's a consortium across the country of districts, states that are involved in Smarter Balance. When this was a task force looking at this in the state of Iowa, that was the data that I recall, and I wanted to say it was, you know, 20 to 25 states that were using Smarter Balance. But again, that's going from about two years, you know, of memory.
And most of those, I believe, are in the upper Midwest, through the.
And we piloted this two years ago in two of our elementary buildings, the Smarter Balanced Assessment, just so we could try to get ahead of the game to see what the assessments look like. The state had asked during that task force work if there were districts that were willing to do that, and we were one of those districts. So it is a different assessment. It's going to be a challenging assessment, but certainly look at how our students are doing with those critical thinking skills and being able to utilize the learning that we expect them to utilize.
And it sounds like it's pretty, it's more widespread than our Iowa assessments as far as.
Yes.
Schools and states that are using this very test that we're going to.
Yes, Iowa assessments used to be kind of the main metric across the nation, you know, 20, 30, even, you know, 40 years ago. I think, and again, now this is two-year-old data, that there were only maybe three or four states utilizing the Iowa assessments. So that has been an assessment that has not been utilized, and we think Smarter Balanced will be much more indicative of, hopefully, the work that we want students to be able to showcase what they're learning.
We had an opportunity, we have a teacher at Pete that was, served on the committee and spent hours in Des Moines, working with groups, you know, all of the educators across Iowa, trying to put this together. And they were really a dedicated group. I don't think, I think when she was talking to us about it, said she'd hardly missed. I don't know if she missed a meeting, and if she did, she was able to connect and just participate. But she was disappointed last year when they thought they weren't going to fund the opportunity for us to move in this direction because she believed in the rigor and relevance of the test. So I'm excited that we are moving in that direction.
Is their funding approved for it?
Not at this time, no. You know, we have some title dollars and some other funding mechanisms that we have for assessment components. But this is going to be an interesting rollout just with the funding components, knowing that there is the mandated summative assessment, but are we going to move forward with all the formative assessment components and some of the other suite of opportunities within the Smarter Balance? So that is going to be another ongoing discussion and challenge as we look at this into the future, which presents some great opportunities for what we want and how do we make sure that our students are learning at the levels that we expect them to.
So I heard you say mandated but not funded, pretty common phrase. What, so what is, what is the expected additional funding that we're going to be required when we move from Iowa assessments to Smarter Balance?
That is something that we don't necessarily know.
And I know it depends on all the components that we select from Smarter.
It does. Iowa assessments typically ran in that $2 to $4 per student range. They are saying with the entire suite of services underneath the Smarter Balance will be in that $20 to $22 range per student. The question is, though, how much of that will be offset with state funding? How much of that will be offset with some of our title funding that comes through from the federal government? And whether or not, because we're in this consortium, it's going to cut down and cut the cost of that amount of $20 to $22 per student. So there's a lot of unknowns right now as we look to the future. The, I think the intent behind the task force is that the overall dollar amount spent for assessments for students across the district will be about the same as what we had with Iowa assessment because we're mandated to have a second assessment. And the hope in the future is that the total cost of Smarter Balanced will be the same, revenue-neutral, based on what we're spending now for all assessments that we do. Now, that's going to be an evolution. It won't happen year one or year two.
And another challenge for a lot of districts is the online piece, that a lot of districts are not real set up right now to be able to assess their students online. And so when you talk about unfunded mandates, that's one of those where they're going to have to spend some dollars to be able to assess all of their students in an online
Any other questions for Dan? Thank you. Great report. Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, a couple of different things. Number one, we're excited to have the Seven Habits training tomorrow. Number one, we're excited to have the Seven Habits Training tomorrow and Wednesday, and that will be with city staff, some city council members, members of CFU staff. And very, very exciting, that will be held again the next two days. We have IASB State Convention, November 16th and 17th. And again, that's always an exciting time to learn and to understand some of those components across the state that several districts are moving forward with. And then, the other component that's within the packet, and there's just one slide that I wanted to highlight within that eight-page report, is our mobility data. Again, there are eight pages that back up some of this data components that shows just the mobility of our students. And this is looking at number of students and their mobility coming into our district, maybe moving out of our district, and some of it's intra-district mobility as well, moving from one elementary to another or one junior high to another based on, you know, purchasing another home around Cedar Falls. I think you can see the trend line going back now to 2006, 2007. At that time, we had a mobility percentage of about 18.5%. We have stayed fairly consistent even though we are growing as a district and growing fairly significantly. But this past year, 2015, 16, we had a 16.6% mobility. As Dan talked about, not all students that might be in a cohort starting in third grade and finalizing in their assessment as 11th grade, you can see that we could have anywhere from, you know, 16 to 20% different students within a cohort as they go through the system. So, it's just important data to understand. It's still data that we review, we look at, we closely monitor because we want to find out the number of movements in, number of movements out, and the number of moves within our district for our students because that certainly can impact, number one, they're transitioning into a new building. But number two, just to ensure that they are still being tracked, student by student, skill by skill, and they're growing at the level that they're taking to grow.
Do we have any information on which students were in kindergarten that actually graduated? I mean, and this is year by year. Do we have information of who, how many, what percent actually graduate?
Yes, we can track that. It's data that we don't track over the 13-year career necessarily. What we track is that year-to-year data, number one, of mobility long-term, but also then our graduation rates and whether or not students are matriculating through our system appropriately.
Because that would be a higher percent than this from kindergarten, first grade till 12th, wouldn't it?
It would be, yes. When you look at a cohort coming in as kindergartners to when they actually graduate as seniors, we can track the number of mobilities within that entire cohort. We've just not tracked that data in that way, but it's data that we can receive.
Just curious.
Thank you. Any other questions for Andy?
I have one question. So, we have a school board meeting Monday, the 14th.
Yes.
Then there's the IASB convention.
Yes.
And when's our next school board meeting?
The 28th of November. And at that meeting, we will kind of have a follow-up discussion.
That's what I was going to ask. You're anticipating my question, okay, all right.
That'll be at 6:00 PM? Is that anticipated, so we'll have it an hour before or during the meeting?
That was my understanding, that that would start at 6:00 is when we discuss that at the calendar meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, good.
Okay, any other questions, comments, questions from the board or concerns?
I just wanted to share, Andy and I had the opportunity through another group that we're involved in to tour the classrooms at Waterloo's Center for the Technical Education Center, or I guess it's the Center for Technical Education. And I know they announced some new programs this week. They had another open house. But we got to tour their medical healthcare classroom and their graphic design kind of digital arts classroom. And it was extremely impressive and really exciting. So, if anybody has an opportunity, I know Jane would be happy to show you the facility. Knowing that we're getting ready to launch CAPS, it's just a great, some signature programs that we're doing in our region. And we should be pretty proud of the whole Cedar Valley because we are doing some great things for all sorts of different kinds of students, so.
Thank you, Jenny. All right, I know that everybody has their book. So, maybe we talk about when we want to maybe have the first discussion so that everybody has kind of an idea of starting to read a couple of chapters. And I didn't bring my book with me. So, is it realistic if we read through the first, maybe four? Or do you have, is there a, go ahead.
No, and it's one of those aspects where I've read this book, but it's now been about four years ago. So, let's, let me pull together and I might put some talking points together. And I just want to make sure before I've not really reflected back on the chapters that make sense maybe to discuss.
Okay.
Collectively, if that makes sense.
And you send a schedule out, then?
Yep, then we'll send out a schedule. And what's exciting too, and I know this was a conversation at the board table when we went through this, this is a training that the great majority of our administrators are going through this year. It's a training that we have, I think, for six full days and a few partial days. And it's really focused on how do you have deep conversations that are relevant to get really at the heart of challenges or areas of growth? And I think it's going to be a very worthwhile book study.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else to come before the board? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
It's been moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you.